Item J is in Juliet four. This is the Ponce de Leon landing flags. Commissioner Tobias, this is your district, so if you'd go ahead and introduce it, please.
Thank you very much. The alleged Ponce de Leon landing flags. Flagpole's been erected in Palm, in Melbourne Beach, the Ponce de Leon Park, that is causing much confusion and consternation amongst residents. The design for this park was approved by previous board, none of us up here, in 2006, before the recession, which is why the flagpole was now only erected. Staff's decision in approving expenses of the park are consistent with board-approved intentions of the design. The current design has a Spanish flag with Puerto Rican flag and a Florida flag flying below it. Several people have expressed outrage over these choices. As such, it is my request to the board that the arrangements be changed. In place of the Spanish flag, I believe it would be more acceptable to fly the Florida flag beneath that. A Brevard County flag would be more appropriate and consistent, that this is a county park paid for by county tax dollars, along with a POW/MIA flag. I don't want to, but I'd be more than willing to get into the history that dictates that Ponce de Leon, in fact, did not land in that park, and as such, it's probably best to be as historically accurate as possible. So it's upon discussion, I would like to make a motion to direct staff to make the necessary design modifications in order to place the Florida flag, Brevard County flag, POW/MIA flag, and place the current flags at the Juan Ponce de Leon Park. Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we've got a motion. Do we have a second for discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and just step into public comment at this point and see if you have a second later on. Just for folks, so that you know the order, so that hopefully you can, if you have, if you have to step out to use the restroom or get a drink of water or something, you know when you're coming up. I just want to give you the first few, so that you know, and then we'll go from there. So first up, we'll have Chris Duncan from Palm Bay, then we'll have Randy Foster from Palm Bay, and if I mispronounce any names, I apologize, I'm trying to do the best I can. Christina Keshishian from Melbourne Beach will be third up, then Samuel Lopez from Melbourne will be fourth, and then, let's see, Santa Isabel Wright will be after that, and then we have, thank you, we have Samantha Nazari, and then, if one of my colleagues up here will remind me, I'll go through the next round after that, but just to kind of pace yourselves for the time being. So Chris Duncan, if you'd come up first, please, sir. Evening.
Fellow Brevard County residents, Board of Commissioners, Chairman Loebur. As I sat here, and it got a little cold a few moments ago before we recessed, I thought about everything I heard from the leadership up here. I thought about the diligence that I heard with the timekeeping of the chairman. I thought about the mothering that I heard from, you know, just, you know, speaking about making decisions as a member of this dius. But I'm here today to just express a few thoughts of concern about what we have here in this county, the diversity that's in this county, and the people that we have here today that represents UTB, and also this Ponce de Leon landing. I find it necessary that Brevard County remains culturally diverse within our parks, because many cultures visit our parks. As a disabled resident who has dealt with sensory deprivation of my visual capacity, I'm one of your white cane people here in the county, I've had to filter everything through hearing, so I've heard tactile, I've heard familiar voices, Commissioners Darney. And as I've met some of the leaders outside of this, I've also had an opportunity to hear what's being said now. The flag is there because it was set by the state to be historic, and there was a finding here in Florida. Florida, the name given, land of flowers. And I'm for the American flag. I'm a son of law enforcement, served five and a half years as a US Naval Cadet, US Navy Sea Cadet, underneath the CVN-74 Stennis Division. But I think the removal of one flag is a removal of all flags. And cultural flags, such as the Spaniard flag and the Puerto Rican flag, those flags, I don't think they are there to confuse people, I think they're there to say, well, this was the past, here is the present, and somewhere in between there, we unite together. However, I really came today because unfortunately, with some of the leaders present here, there's been indiscretion in support for organizations that serve as an enrich educational hub for the community, whether it be feeding homeless children or seniors. And I've tried to address it to the best of my ability, but this seems like one of those things again. And honestly, in recent news and media, the only people that I've heard that are removing flags or have issues with flags of another culture are the white nationalists. And I'm not saying that anyone is with that group or anything. However, we all have our opinions. My opinion is that when people ask, where's Ponce de Leon, or where's he from, where did he come from, those flags, they show where he's from. In resilience, the American flag fries proudly as well. I'm hoping that as you hear the people that come up here today, you will hear the hearts, hear the outreach, and always remember that reaching out is reaching in. Christopher Duncan, Southeast Palm Bay, Florida. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You timed that perfectly as well.
I'm a counter, they didn't give me a cane.
Good job. All right, Mr. Foster, you're up next. Mr. Foster, I see you're from Palm Bay, sir?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioner Loebur, and Commissioners. You know, I have somewhere to be, but I came here because I think this is important. I disagree with my Commissioner, and he knows me, I think, we know each other very well, but I disagree with him on this one. Them flags, I've been to the park many times, and that's a historical place. Got a placard from the state, you can't deny that. Them flags represent Florida, it represents the Spaniards that came here, it represents the Puerto Rican flag, that Ponce de Leon was a governor, and it represents America. I love the American flag. I think it should be flown everywhere in this country and outside this country. I fought on the American flag. It's displayed proudly with the Spanish flag equally. If you look at the flag etiquette, how nation flags should be displayed respectfully, it should be displayed higher than a state flag and higher than a Commonwealth flag, and that's being done. What I do have a problem with, this might be surprising, is the POW flag. That's not a flag that should be flown at that location. It's a military flag, and as far as the missing in action, it has nothing to do with that park, it has nothing to do with that location. So that flag shouldn't be flown. It's a Brevard County park, we all know that. You don't need to have the Brevard County flag flying at that park. They have a placard there with the seal of Brevard County. And when you look at the seal of Brevard County, if that's confusing to people, then the seal itself should be confusing, because 1513 has a Spaniard, Ponce de Leon flag, and then underneath it got the American flag, somebody landing on the moon, okay? And that's our seal. Does this look confusing to you? It don't look confusing to me. Been around ever since I stepped foot in Brevard County. So it shows the history of Brevard County, and the flags are there, just like the flags at Ponce de Leon Park shows the history of Brevard County. This area of Florida, before it became Florida, was Spaniards. They landed here before the, before this United States became a country, before it became a state, and before it became a county. That flag represent our history. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, we have Christina, is it Keshishian?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, did it right for once.
Good job.
Thanks.
Okay, first of all, I feel bad, because Commissioner Tobias, Christina Keshishian, 313 Hibiscus Trail, Melbourne Beach. I feel bad that people have contacted your office with outrage, and here, I was at the unveiling of this exhibit in all its beauty, and I didn't call to say thanks. And I don't think you guys do get thanks when good things go well and when things are nice, and you only hear the bad comments. So I felt obligated to come and talk about what a moving experience it was to sit there under that tent, under the bright blue Florida sky, at the Ponce de Leon Park, a mile from where I live, where I bring my kids regularly, and recognize this as kind of an international spot of distinction. While I was there at the unveiling, I had the opportunity to see people from United Third Bridge speaks, people from the Historical Commission speak. I'm surprised none of you were there, because it was quite an event. I ran into neighbors and friends from Melbourne Beach. It was just absolutely gorgeous, and I went home and posted all my photos on social media. I got comments from as far away as Hawaii, people who didn't realize that this was where Ponce de Leon is said to have first landed. And whether or not that's something that's arguable, you know, as somebody who wants their county to do well and wants local businesses to do well, it's something I would think would be smart to promote. Couple of weeks ago, I went to St. Augustine, and, you know, we did the lights and the fort and whatnot, and they certainly embrace their, their culture and their heritage, and I think it would be an opportunity for Brevard County to promote that area a little bit more as well, rather than downplay it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have Mr. Lopez, from Melbourne.
Yes, Samuel Lopez, from Melbourne.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager, Attorney, and Chair. My name is Samuel Lopez. I've been involved in this project now for 19 years, at the Juan Ponce de Leon site. I've worked under different Commissioners. I was first appointed to work on that site by Commissioner Nancy Higgs. I served on the Historical Commission, I did two terms on that. And I'm so concerned, because when we started the project, as we were moving forward, as soon as we put pavers onto the ground, we got phone calls, the county got phone calls, what are you guys doing, you can't be doing this stuff and everything? And we put the pavers, and about a month later, everything died out. And then, a few months later, the granite wall went up, we have the, and all of a sudden, it was, it was all smashed to pieces. And on one side of the wall that was left, there was words, KKK. And so, we experienced that, trying to develop a park with the history. I worked with a very few historians that I've worked. I got, I got an opportunity to work with Gannon, who was the dean of all the historians, who basically supported Douglas T. Peck. Douglas T. Peck was the person that actually did the voyage, and no one, till this day, has done that voyage. He has been the one that actually did it and used the track, and National Geographics, and your packet is in there, basically asked him to do the pack, and they basically asked him the question, why do you want me, why do you want to use our track? And he says, well, you know, we actually really searched and researched it, and researched everything, and we found out that you, your track is super accurate. So I worked there, then I got called in 1513 by the Secretary of State, I was issue a book, and in that book, I also sent you there, from the Florida Humanities, it was given to us there, and actually said that they did a timeline, on the bottom, it started 1513, Melbourne Beach. This was not me doing this, this was now the state. They gave us the landmarker in 2005, and at the site, and then, in that book, the same book, it says that where he landed was approximately five miles nautical south, it's within that vicinity. And so, we kept working on the project. It became harder for me then to get, to get donations because of the KKK stuff, and our people didn't feel like they wanted to continue donating money when they would continue to destroy it. But we kept going, and the county worked with us on this, on the project. I'm concerned with reference to the flags. I also, on the new packet that I just gave you, there's a United States code. United, can I try to finish this point?
I can let you finish the sentence, but I can't really do anything different, because I've got to treat everyone the same, so if you want to finish the sentence, you're more than welcome to do that, but I apologize.
I just want to just read the code, and it takes a half a minute.
If, yeah, I apologize, but if you want maybe to have someone else during their time have it read, that may be the best bet. I apologize, I wish I could, I could do differently, but I've got to treat everyone equally.
Yeah, you can continue, no, no, you can continue. Whoever's going to read my time.
But next up, and I'll just go over the next several, so folks know as well that they're coming up, we'll have Santa Isabel Wright, then we'll have Samantha Nazani, then we'll have Mark Martinez, then we'll have Pat Paisley, and then we'll have Martha Basaro. So I take it you're Ms. Wright?
I am, and I was going to concede my time, but it's okay. Commissioner Loebur, nice to meet you.
Likewise.
Thank you, Commissioners, such a pleasure to be here and to see you all.
From Palm Bay, ma'am?
Yes, I am from Palm Bay. Very proud to be a Palm Bay resident, and hopefully a future Councilwoman. I am here to represent my community, not only Brevard County, but my Hispanic community. I am appalled by Mr. Tobias. This is not the first time that he attacks the Hispanic community, and I really don't understand why he is trying so hard to erase our history. Brevard County is very rich in history. We have a park that is a national monument, and unfortunately, our community is not expressing what needs to be done with that park, which is promoted. If you look at other states, the Alabama Shield, LA County flag, the LA County Shield, Texas Shield, Pensacola flag, and the Florida State flag, our own county flags, they all have the Spanish flag. If you look at his remark that this is a debunked theory, if he does his research, he will see that the National Geographic has said that Mr. Peck's track is the only accurate track, and he did land here. If he wouldn't have landed here, I propose that the state of Florida would not have issued that as a state landmark, and a historical landmark, that is recognized in the Department of Interior. I am the last person that would oppose the missing in action flag, my brother was a Marine. But there's a time and a place for everything. This flag, unfortunately, is not the place for it. This office, this building is not, that is not protocol. You are talking about we are not following protocol at a park, when our own county Commissioner's not doing his own research to find out that that flag is in the wrong place at the wrong time. We support it, we embrace it, and we pray for our soldiers, but if you want to talk about doing things by protocol, then you need to do your own research, Mr. Tobias, and say, okay, I shouldn't be making remarks that are not accurate. Saying that we are insulting our community, who are we to insult anyone? We are Hispanics, we have a right to be here, we have a right to have representation in a park that has been designated, a land, a site for our whole country to represent. Ponce de Leon did land here, accept it, embrace it, and promote it, so this county continues to make money and growth, not suffering the way we are. It's unfortunate that you think that you can continue to try to erase our history. We are proud Hispanics, proud Americans, and definitely here to stay. I would ask you to embrace that and understand that everybody has a different culture, including yourself. There's nobody here that is more apparent that is against the Hispanic community than yourself. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, next up, we're going to have Samantha Nazari, and before you start, if you would, and this applies to everyone, regardless of whether you're for or against Commissioner Tobias's proposal, if you have any comments toward any of us, if you'd just make sure that you go through me as chair, it would make conducting the meeting a lot easier, and it would also be in keeping with our policy. So I'm not going to cut anyone off unless it's really extreme, but I think just to, you know, make whatever points you care to make, certainly do that, but if you'd just address them to me, please.
Absolutely. Samantha Nazari, 2433 Burns Avenue, Melbourne, Florida.
Thank you.
I am here on behalf of the flag situation. I do want to finish what Mr. Lopez was saying about the United States Code. It says, "One seven five point position, the manner of display when flags of two or more nations are displayed, they are to be flown from separate staffs on the same height. The flag should be approximately equal in size, international usage forbids the display of, excuse me, of the flag of one nation above the flag of another nation in peace." I'm coming to you guys as a, I guess, add-on to Brevard County. We moved here from the South Bronx in the 90s, and I came back after my son was born. Part of my attraction to Brevard County is the fact that it was so rich in Spaniard culture. It made us feel welcomed back then. It's sad that now, in 2019, we feel like we're not as welcomed anymore. It feels like we shouldn't be proud of our achievements as a culture. In New York, the United Nations flies every flag of every nation in this world at the same staff without a problem. So I don't understand how a colony flag can bring so much, what was the word, constration? Was the word that he used, which means anxiety to its residents? It should bring pride to its residents, that your, where you live is enriched in culture and diversity. Brevard County represents a huge spectrum of a Hispanic population. I do have to say, though, this is not our first time having to represent our community in its entirety to this commission, long before you took position, Chairman, I just want to make that clear. We have had multiple issues slated at the Hispanic community, and nothing ever is offered in conjunction to join us, to help us. The previous Commissions for 19 years worked with Mr. Lopez on getting this project, bringing it to fruition. They gave him over $66,000 to replace the statue that was once destroyed. So obviously, previous, previous Commissions, and maybe not all Commissioners up there feel the same way, wanted to engulf this history, welcome this multicultural situation in, and not make us feel like it's a burden or a disrespect to Florida, when, as has been pointed out, it sits on your seal, on your county's seal. Our flag, the Spaniard flag is on your county's seal. This doesn't only take away from Puerto Ricans, it takes away from all Hispanics in your community. It makes them feel like we want to be erased. And at this time, in this particular tension in this nation, that should be the last thing we're looking for, is exclusion, we should be looking for inclusion. And I do agree with my former counterparts that came up here, we should be promoting this, because this, this should be as big to Brevard County as St. Augustine is to that county. It should be promoted, it should be welcomed as a tourist attraction, it should be thoroughly researched before you come up without your full scope of information. There's many partners here in Brevard County, Sea Frear, many archaeologists that have worked on the projects that have proven that Spain, Spanish, Spaniard ships are all up and down this coastline for a reason. They got there somehow. So I would just like the fact of the flags to be respected, to be left where they are, because I really don't see who they're bothering when there's nobody around them or across the street from them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up, we have Mark Martinez from Melbourne.
Good evening.
Just before you start, I was going to say, if, if everyone that's, that desires to speak has submitted a pink form, we're in good shape, but I see a lot of folks in the audience, but I don't see that many forms, so if anyone is here to speak on it, I just want to make sure, ma'am, yeah, anyone that wants to speak, if you go to the back, there's a stack of pink forms. If you fill that out, they'll bring them up to me, and I just don't want anyone to have waited for, for the duration of the meeting to speak on this and then not be heard, whether you're for or against, or neutral. We just got a whole slew. All right, perfect. I apologize, sir.
No worries. Good evening, Councilmembers, or County Commissioners, good evening, everybody here. I'm not, you know, I'm for it, it's an historical landmark. You know, my family's, they're from Spain, so I know it goes down the line, just, I'm from Queens, New York, so, you know, I never, you know, felt a lot of, how do you say, racism or anything like that. We never had none of that, but, you know, coming down here is different. It's beautiful down here, I love it, my kid's grown up here, but, you know, I really don't have a lot to say about that. How are you going to erase a historical fact that's been there since 1513? And then, back in 15, was it 64? And 1864, when I believe, if I'm correct, Brevard County was actually a county-county, and putting in with the, with the flag, even in your seal. You know, I, I'm not much for a public speaker or nothing like that, so I'm not going to waste no time, but I just had, I just had to throw it out there and say what I had to say. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Next up, we have Pat Paisley.
Good evening, Commissioners. Pat Paisley, Melbourne Beach. I was heartbroken when I saw once again that our American flag was being disrespected. Our American flag represents all nationalities, not just Spanish, not just Puerto Rican. And if we are going to just put up a Spanish and Puerto Rican flag, I'm asking, I am Polish, why can't I have a Polish flag? Why not have an Israeli flag? Why not have an Irish flag? Our American flag represents all nationalities. I would also like to ask why our park department is constantly funding additional products for, the projects for this park? According to a presentation by United Third Bridge, they were soliciting funds from anywhere from $25,000 to $2,500, and yet, we paid, the park department just recently paid for this wall and these flags, $18,500. So I'm asking you, where is this money going? If people were donating money to have, to go towards projects in the park, where did this money go? Isn't that kind of ironic, that it's, that we're, we're still paying for these? So I'm, and it says, oh, by the way, and if they were trustee level, and a trustee level was the ones that got their name on the wall, no one else, that was $25,000. Okay, so I'm asking, where's that money at? Why are we paying for this? Does, according to the Parks Department, and it says also, I ask, why is there another ribbon cutting there? We have tents, chairs, again, who paid for all of that? We had one ribbon cutting for that park, why did we have to go through another one? Why were we told that the park would increase, increase tourism? If you go and you check TripAdvisor, you're going to see comments of, I would not drive out of your way to visit this particular spot, but the beach is good. This particularly ugly statue, and there's no credible evidence that Ponce de Leon landed in Melbourne Beach, and in fact, and in fact, a depiction of Ponce claiming this land for Spain, he's facing in the wrong direction. And finally, if the taxpayers of Brevard County paid for this park, which I see no evidence that anybody else did, why aren't our names on the wall? I want my name on this wall. I think, I mean, why is there only particular people on this wall? Every day, I drive past a statue. Juan Ponce de Leon was a conquistador. He murdered, he enslaved people, and the main reason he came here was to enslave people and bring it back to his farm. And we are taking down statues all across the United States for a lot less than the heroes that we have across the United States, just so I have to see the statue every day. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, just to let folks know where they stand in the lineup, after Martha Basaro, we have Juanita Zermono, I'm sorry, Zermento, we have, is that Will Davis? Will Davis, and then Margarita Chavez. So Ms. Basaro, if you'd come up.
Thank you very much. I'm Martha Basaro from Merritt Island, and I'm representing the Native Heritage Gathering Incorporated, and we love history. We love inclusive history, we love history that brings truth, and history that tells the entire story. The people who would have the absolute knowledge of exactly when and where there was contact by the European peoples are depicted on this aid. I don't know if I can get that.
If you hold it forward, the TV crew will go ahead and zoom out to get it fully.
This is a teaching aid that we use with many classrooms throughout Florida, and within our, absolutely within our environmentally endangered lands programs teachings as well. And it's a depiction that's showing us the people who existed here, to what we can even scientifically and technology go back to saying maybe 15,000 years at this time. Technology keeps on changing and keeps adding to what we know and what we understand about the peoples who were here, and the peoples who came, and all of those interchanges that happened. And it's important that we tell the whole story. The whole story can't be told by these people. Their voices are silenced forever. Within 200 years, the peoples who lived here at the European encounters were eliminated. So we don't have that firsthand knowledge from the side of the people who resided here. It's gone. What we'd like to see is an understanding that history includes what happened once Europeans came here, but go back and show what happened when people lived here prior to that. Many of our historic signs throughout Brevard County do include that history. At the Ullamay Historic Sign, we talk about the Native Americans who were here. The sign that's posted The sign that's posted right now at the Ponce, in, uh, park is not inclusive of any information about the peoples who were here, but they were definitely here. And they would tell that story. They would know what was going on when Europeans landed, and what happened to them afterwards. So we'd like to see the flags consistently flown in all parks and recreation facilities as the procedures and the policies require, and that's what we're asking for now, is to remember this is a Parks and Recreation Facility, and we have to go by those rulings.
Just, just very briefly, well, Commissioner Tabia.
Sorry, that was crap there.
Oh, okay. No, just very briefly, I, I apologize, but could you just give me a real quick clarification in terms of what it is that you're suggesting, that, that the group that you represent would prefer to see or not see in a park, because I'm a little unclear?
We prefer that the, the flags that are flown are the ones that the Parks and Recreation Department has for all Parks and Recreation Departments. There are three flags that are allowed to fly. That's the United States flag at the highest level, the state of Florida, if it's applicable, and then the POW flag. Those three are the ones that we fly everywhere else.
I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Juanita Zermeto? And ma'am, I see you're from Titusville, is that correct?
Yes, I currently live in Titusville. I'm here representing myself and my husband. I am Native American, part Hispanic, and a wife of a military, retired Army Vietnam veteran. My preference, what I would like to see, is like Martha stated, the protocol that is in place now. The American flag, the state flag, and the POW flag, when appropriate. We can't undo history. I'm not trying to stand here and change it or anything like that. But like Martha pointed out, the people who were here were totally wiped out by an invading country. A gentleman and a flag that we now want to honor? I'm sorry, as an American, as an American wife, whose husband, whose brother, and whose uncles have gone over and fought for this land, I don't want to honor any invaders. But I do want to acknowledge and say, yes, they came, they conquered, they destroyed. That's what I'd like to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have Will Davis, from Titusville as well.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm also here in support of the Native American community. One of the most oppressed groups of people in this, are the second most oppressed people in this country are the Native American people. And our history has been written by the conqueror. And to know the reality of that history is to be more educated. Ponce de Leon came here as a conqueror. He was looking for a fountain of youth. As a result of the contact of the Spanish presence in this land, the original inhabitants of this land, the IAs, the Apalachicola, the Tectostas, the Tamacquins, were completely and utterly made extinct within one hundred years of their landing on this property. I think to honor somebody of that nature is not in anyone's best interest. Also, the way the flags are flown, you know, there is a US code setting forth the proper way to display flags in this country. And I think if those codes are not adhered to, then those flags need to be removed and flown in the, in the proper order. The United States flag, even if there's a row of flags, even at the same level, the American flag should always be displayed in a place of prominence to its right of any other flag. If there's only one flag pole, then the American flag flies first, a state flag flies second, and then any other flag, as is appropriate, flies next after that. You know, it's not about ethnicity, or race, or anything else, it's about being an American. If you come here and you're a citizen, then you should abide by the rules and regulations set forth by Congress and our Constitution about this in US Code Title IV, Chapter 1, Section 7, which sets that apart. And I'll be glad to submit this piece of paper to the commission, if you wish.
If, if anyone would like to see it, certainly they have the ability to request it. I don't know for the remaining time if you want to address it, or...
Okay, okay. And with that in mind, I don't have a problem with displaying flags, as long as there's an event or reason for displaying that flag. Somebody mentioned St. Augustine, I go there frequently, you know, and St. Augustine does fly the Spanish, Spanish flag, but they display it within the old city itself. Okay? And then they display the current Spanish flag during special occasions, like recently they had their four-hundred-fiftieth anniversary. And I had no problem with that. They were honoring the founder of that city. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, we have Margarita Chavez, and then after Ms. Chavez, we have Karen Fenske.
Good evening, commissioners, how are you this evening?
And you're from Palm Bay, ma'am?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm here to address the couple of things that have already been spoken about. I understand that we have issues about the flag, the, um, the debunking, the conquistador. But we are here in Brevard County, and as a previous educator, because you also were a teacher to some of my grandchildren, Mr. Lopez, you know that historians put together books and say, you know, this is how history is. And then they find in history that that really didn't happen that way, because you have to research it. And this is what happens. When you research it, you find out the truth, and the truth prevails. When you find the truth, then you are able to discuss and put up issues with the government officials that you have within your county, which I'm sure all of these things were done prior to this event and this project taking place. Otherwise, why did it go up? Why do we have a flag? Why was it in many discussions of so many meetings? I too am from Spanish heritage. I too am Indian. I too have families that have been mixed with Puerto Rican and Mexican. I too also know that every one of you on this commission know that it's an importance to Brevard County to bring the best that it can to the people that we serve here. That's who you are up there, serving us as knowledgeable people, and we follow your intuitions, your guidelines, and everything. I know when people speak and say, hey, this isn't right, or this isn't right, you have to listen. And for that, we are here. These people have spoken in regards to this, and some have spoken in regards to that. It is left up to listening and knowing what's right and what has been presented to you and what has been approved already, to be able to know that here we have the once Ponce de Leon flag set up from the Brevard County Recreation Center that was posted as how it should be, these flags. As far as a POW flag, military flags for that is at a military place. There are sites set up for that, which is a cemetery grounds for the POWs. There's also military bases, government buildings, that they should have these for those particular military members for that particular cause. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, madam. And the last card that I see on this item is Karen Fenske from Melbourne Beach.
Hello, Commissioner Lopez, how are you?
Karen Fenske from Melbourne Beach. The IAs Indians lived here, this was their home before we ever were established here. And once Juan Ponce de Leon came here and demolished them, and took them, and just killed them all. I think the statue should even be gone. I think the statue should be of the IAs Indians. I mean, they're no longer here, and they were taken from their home and killed and maimed and enslaved. But I do agree with the Native Indians that spoke here before, and I think the flag should be the way they asked you to place them, and I agree with them. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I appreciate the decorum of most of the, the folks in the audience. I only heard white nationalism once and, and racist once. Here's what I, here's what I didn't hear, was any reference to any historical documents whatsoever. When this initially was done, a gentleman by the name of Douglas Peck, who calls himself an independent historian, yet maybe independent, but certainly is not a historian. He never had a history degree. He was not a professor of any sort, nor did he have a terminal degree of any type, but he went on a boat ride. And during his boat ride, he ended up here in Melbourne Beach. The article that I, in nineteen, late nineteen nineties, the article that I passed out to the commission, this has nothing to do with any, anything other than historical accuracy. So I have a peer-reviewed article that was published by a historian, PhD, from Texas A&amp;M, and then the Oxford University, it looks like. And here, here's what he had to say, not only about the research that came before, but the outcome after he did empirical data collection. "The prevailing wisdom with regards to resailing voyage," that's the one Mr. Lopez mentioned with Mr. Peck, "is it must be done with a craft similar in terms of displacement, draft, sailing rig, and spread, which is the same square footage of canvas. This, Mr. Peck, failed to do. This finding puts them all in doubt, including the landing in Melbourne Beach." I said this before, I'll say this again, Santa Claus spent as much time in Juan Ponce de Leon Park as Juan Ponce de Leon did. I, I'm not trying to take out the statue, even though that's maybe something that probably should not have been put there in the first place, there's just no reference to the Spanish flag, there's no reference to the Puerto Rican flag. I, you know, I, I have no problem if it's just the American flag, I just was trying to use the awkward stuff that was out there. So, you know, if, if someone had brought up, this, this study was done in 2013, it looks like, if someone had more recent, peer-reviewed data, then I would certainly be willing to regard that, but it's a lot easier to call someone a white nationalist and a racist than to say, here's more research that's been conducted to prove that yours is wrong. So I, I think that the decisions made in the past probably were made with good intentions, and probably were made with, prior to, to this, to this research, but at one time, people thought the world was flat, but the reality of the situation is we, we proved otherwise. And I, I'm sorry it doesn't, you know, meet the ending that you guys were so concerned with, but, and, and I appreciate, Mr. Lopez, you getting with me. But you mentioned the seal. The seal's inaccurate itself. It says that we became a county in eighteen fifty-four, we became a county in eighteen fifty-five. So the seal I brought up, though, the Brevard County Commission decided it was probably best to leave it. And then you also sent me the seal of, of the Senate, and it had a flag on it. You probably didn't look close enough at that, because that also flew a Confederate flag in that same one. And the legislature made the wise decision, I believe, to change that seal, so it no longer had that Confederate flag. So anyone to make a reference that I'm an even slightly racist, or white nationalism came into regard when I wanted to get rid of the Confederate flag in a state seal is patently incorrect, and, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry that's there, but I, I just would like history to be accurately reflected, and that is the only reason I don't think the Spanish flag or the Puerto Rican flag has any regard. If we'd rather not put the POW flag and we just fly the Florida flag, I'd be, be more than willing to do that. I, I just, just would request that the motion that be laid out prior be taken up as we move forward, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tabia, I've, I've got some questions, if that's all right for you?
Sure.
And I, if, if you'd prefer, I can, I can bounce them to staff. I, I just want to make sure that I have a good understanding before we get to a vote on this, assuming you get a second. Right now, in that park, are we flying a current-day Spanish flag, or are we flying a period Spanish flag from the days of Ponce de Leon?
I would, I would have to ask Google that one, in all honesty. I have absolutely no idea.
I see Ms. Donner coming up, because to me, that may make a big difference in terms of what we're doing.
Miss Donner's belt is Google over here.
It's the current Spanish flag.
It's the current Spanish flag? And the, the flag on our seal, which I'll, I'll admit, I, I do believe that your, your point with respect to it being a year off for one of the dates, that's, that's well taken, but the flag on our seal, is that the period flag, or is that the modern Spanish flag?
I won't give you a hundred percent answer. I'm going to say it's no, we actually dug up an article from the seventies, where a person had questions on inaccuracy. I mean, and it had to do with, you got a ship at anchor with, but it's full sail, Orange Tree didn't exist then, it was like one speaker that came up, so...
Okay, so it was basically a best effort?
Yeah, yeah, that's an artistic drawing.
And then, I, I don't know if anyone on the commission or on staff knows, with respect to St. Augustine, and when I was a kid and in school, when we think of colonization from Spain, we always thought of St. Augustine. We took trips to the, the fort up there, now they have a couple forts, there's the main one that everyone's aware of, and there's one maybe, I think, ten miles or so away, fifteen miles away, that I've been to, Fountain of Youth, all that stuff with the Coquina. We weren't taught that Ponce de Leon landed in Melbourne Beach, but then again, we also were taught that Pluto is a planet, and apparently that's not correct now, so that is what it is. Do we know whether they fly in, in St. Augustine, putting aside the special events, do we know whether they fly the old flag or the new flag for those areas that are specific to that particular period?
I, I don't know. I tell you, I Googled some pictures of the fort, and a couple of pictures have the, I don't know what flag it is, but it's the, it's the cross, it's the red cross, it's not a, it's like a diagonal red cross. I couldn't find any other flags.
Okay, because I, I heard one of the...
And I don't know if they're current, those are just Google pictures.
And I did hear one of the speakers mention that for special events, they may fly the modern one. I just didn't know if that implicitly suggests they fly the period flag for the others, I, I don't know. I will just say, before I turn it over to others to comment, I don't want to in any way be insensitive to the concerns that were raised by the, the several Native American folks that were here. The point that was made with respect to a number of tribes having been made extinct as a result of colonization, which I'm, I'm not going to blame, certainly not entirely, on Spanish colonization, I think French colonization, English colonization, all of the colonizers did a horrible job, or I should say, they, they, they would probably consider it an excellent job, I would consider it a horrible job, in that they essentially did their utmost to commit genocide here, and I, I think that is deplorable, and I, whatever we do, I, I don't want it to be thought of as, as me or the commission in any way condoning genocide which objectively took place centuries ago. That is a concern for me. I'd, I'd like to hear some more discussion from my colleagues up here, though, before I, I say anything else. Although it doesn't seem like they're too anxious. All right, Commissioner Ms. Nardi?
Hi, Mike Khan. This is troubling for me, because I don't know, and I, I get what Ms. Pasley was talking about as far as county resources, that's what I take issue with more than anything. That's what I take issue with more than anything. I think because, and you used the argument that we're tearing down statues all over this country because everybody's offended, and we have this PC culture, and nobody likes this, and we have such a disagreement on our history. I mean, we have some pretty, we have people that we worship today that did some pretty horrible things. You know, they enslaved people, they abused people, they, you know, they killed Native Americans. I mean, the Native Americans were the original people in this country. So, I mean, you guys are the ones that always get the short end of the stick. I mean, in actuality, I don't know that this should have happened, but I do know that this commission's not responsible for it, nor on the expenditure as far as funding went for it. However, you know, and I loved Javier Molinaris. He's a great speaker of the Hispanic community. When he said that he wanted to do a multicultural park, because he wanted that flags flown from all over the world at this park, and I thought that that was a neat idea where we could celebrate the diverse culture in our community. Now, that's what I would have preferred that happened. However, you know, I can pull five studies that totally disagree with one another. So, I don't know that Commissioner Tabia's study trumps any other study that's out there as far as whether or not Ponce de Leon stayed here. But the commissions of past made this decision. They allowed the statue, they allowed the flags, and I think tearing them down will actually cause more division in our community than it would be just to leave them the way they are. Because I don't believe, my office has not gotten any phone calls about people being offended from those flags, and I know that it's important to a large number of people in our community. So, again, I don't know that I would have made that, this decision. I think I, again, would have went with something a little more along the lines with Javier, because I think one of the most important things, one of the early speakers had said, and let me see if I have her name, so I can at least give you credit for it. And maybe it was Santa Isabel Wright, maybe it was you. But the one thing, one of the first things you said is that you're a proud American, and I think we all are, and we all come from somewhere. So, this was something important to members of your community, and obviously important to the commission at the time that allowed it to occur. And I think now by destroying what you worked hard for and destroying what nobody, at least in my office, has gotten a call of being offended by, is also an injustice. And I think we need to do more for our Native American community to recognize them as well. And I think that perhaps that's something that we can move forward, because I don't think anybody would argue that you were here first. And I think that's important that we recognize that. But I don't know that, you know, taking down these flags accomplishes what we want it to, because I think it sets a path that we should basically take down everything, you know, and I don't know that that's the right way to go. So, I won't be supporting this.
Commissioner Pritchett.
I'm really glad I let you go first.
Why is that?
That was really good. Just, I agree with Commissioner Isnardi. Just a couple thoughts. You know, since I've been in office, we had all this, we've got to get the country to quit being so divided. You know, different cultures are very beautiful, and they're wonderful, and as long as we learn to live together and embrace those things. But so many times, we remember so many things that are ugly in the past, and we need to let those things go and just kind of focus on the wonderful things of the past. And, you know, I, just looking back on the history, you're going to find so many great men that have done wonderful things. And, I'm sorry, I'm a Christian, unless they're a real strong man of God, they've all got a history back there. So, it's just the nature of men, and I'm not downsizing the bad things that happened, because, you know, in the past, some really bad things happened. But, you know, we just, I don't know. The history of Ponce de Leon's starting to really get my attention right now. But I've got to tell you, Commissioner Tabia isn't a bad man. Just from watching him through these three years, he really has to have things accurate. So, I really believe when he brought this up, this unaccuracy is really just something he has to fix, so we've got to figure out how to do this. But I agree with Commissioner Isnardi. I think this is going to cause more division. And, you know, I don't know. There's even rumor that Columbus really didn't find America first. It could have been the Vikings, or... So, I know things are going to change in the future, but we're going to have to figure out how to embrace the good things in the past and maybe let go of some of those bad things so that we're not all mad at each other moving forward. I get calls, people mad, because Obama's picture's still up in a facility, or Trump's is up, and, you know, somehow we've made some of these things our religion, and we shouldn't. You know, we just need to learn to embrace different cultures, as long as they're kind. So, that's just my addition to Commissioner Isnardi's on here. I think some of these flags are very beautiful, and, you know, we all are Americans, and God bless America, and God bless the people of America, and hopefully we'll learn to come to some kind of agreement here, because in an agreement, we can become a greater country. But I do want to throw that out with Commissioner Tabia. He's a good person, and it's just that thing of him needing to fix this, and we've got to figure that out, because, and maybe we need to work on changing the date on the seal too. But I'm not going to be supporting this either, just because I just, I don't know, I think flags are kind of pretty. But, you know, God bless America. Don't stomp on the American flag either, so that's my part.
Yeah, this is a tough one. I'll tell you, this is one where, however I vote, I don't want it to be misperceived as a slight to either Native Americans or Hispanics. I think both have an incredible culture and contribute an immense amount to where we live. My default with respect to issues that I'm on the fence with is to side with the commissioner in whose district the project or concern is located. And with that said, I probably will be supporting Commissioner Tabia, but I am very ambivalent about this particular one. I can tell you that I wish we had a little bit more information with respect to whether it was the current flag or the period flag. This is one, I don't think, I don't think there is a perfect outcome this evening, but my inclination is to support Commissioner Tabia, not because I in any way want to denigrate anyone, but because I think there have been some valid concerns raised by the Native American community. I do agree that we need to be careful with the POW MIA flag. I would suggest, whether it's this or whether it's something in the future, we have a veteran center here. It's a great park. I'll give my own district the plug. It's in my district. We have some wonderful people that volunteer their time at no cost to work there. If there's a question as to POW MIA flag etiquette, I would suggest we have some local expertise. So, if there is any desire here or elsewhere in the county to fly that flag, I would just suggest that we run it by the folks that are there, because they've done more to serve our country than the vast majority of folks that may not have that level of expertise. But I'll go ahead, I'll second, for purposes of seeing how this goes. I don't know which way this one's going to go. So, Commissioner Tabia made the motion. I'll go ahead and second it, and unless there's further discussion, I'll go ahead and call the question. All right, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, it fails 3-2 with Commissioner Tabia and myself in the failing side. So, thank you all to everyone that came out. I really do appreciate that everyone was patient and that we really had a number of views that were respectfully expressed, and I certainly appreciate that. If there is something either on the Native American side or on the Hispanic side that occurs in my district or any of the others, I would encourage you to get in touch with your commissioner, regardless of how they may have voted with this, because I don't think there's any ill will with respect to anyone up here as to anyone out there. So, thank you all so much. Thank you all so much. Yeah, she's got the cooties. You don't want to shake her hand. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you coming out. Thank you so much, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, likewise. Now, we've got just a couple more things. I'm going to give it a minute, though.
I don't want to be rude.
Yeah. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate you coming out. Thank you so much. Thank you. And I'd love to chat with you later, too. Thank you. And in just a minute, we'll move on to the remainder of the meeting. Thank you, sir. I sincerely hope the young lady that mentioned her grandchildren took a class from me. I sincerely hope they did enjoy that class. With that said, we'll go ahead and move on. I don't have any more public comment, so in a moment, we'll move on to board reports, and we'll start up with Mr. Abate.
No report.
All right, that's easy. Ms. Bentley?
No report.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much for coming out. Yeah, I'm happy to chat with you after, if you'd like, but thank you so much. I appreciate it. All right, Ms. Pritchett.
No report.
Commissioner Pritchett, I apologize. All right, I'm going to skip in the interest of time. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you. This is about a previous action that the board took. There's been some further movement, so I wanted to update the board on this, even though you've already seen this. Governor DeSantis recently released a statement requesting legislature to make, applying e-Verify to all employers in the state of Florida. Our own Representative Thad Altmann introduced legislation last year to do this. Hopefully, he'll do it again this year, that would continue the work to accomplish this goal. As a conservative, I see this as a matter of basic fairness to ensure proper functioning of a free market. Studies have found that under the status quo, unethical business have created a system of modern indentured servitude in which illegal immigrants are routinely treated much worse. The Attorney General issued the opinion stating that we were preempted under state law from making e-Verify system a condition of obtaining a business license. So, what I wanted to do was, of course, thank the governor for forwarding this initiative, but more importantly, I would like to take, thank you, everyone else on this commission who asked the Attorney General ahead of time to look at this. So, I'm sure we had no part in it, but we were certainly at the forefront of this, and just because this may happen in the future, I think that we took some good first steps here. So, thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to speak out about the Indian River Lagoon. I have some firsthand knowledge. I did a nice jet ski ride from Pineda Causeway all the way down to Vera Beach. And had great weather. We did a side trip out into the inlet, into the ocean, jumped some waves, had lunch at Hiram's, and the river's probably better now than I've seen it in years, years and years. I couldn't tell you if it's eight years, 15 years, but it really looks good. I don't know if we have a lot of algae on the bottom or a lot of seagrass, but at least you can see the bottom, and we have a lot of dark areas. And, boy, the fishing. I see fishermen at my dock now, and I haven't seen any for years and years, and the fish they're bringing up, they're throwing them back, they tell me. But 20-inch redfish and 20-inch trout aren't out of the question. So, that's just an update.
All right, Commissioner Isnardi.
I had just one item. I wanted to bring back for either the next meeting or the meeting after. I just want commission to be okay with bringing it back for legislative intent and to be okay with asking staff to look into what I brought up during a previous meeting about renaming that section in District 5, you know, even to Ellis, that whole stretch there, Anderson Parkway. I think that's probably the safest route to go, rather than give it both names. And the reason why I say that is because I don't want there to be any confusion. There'd be enough confusion with us changing the name, but it still recognizes Commissioner Anderson and all the years that he put into getting that roadway done. And could you just bring us back a short report on that for next meeting?
Yes, I've asked several staff members to prepare...
Or it could even be the first meeting of the year. That's fine, too. I'll get with you, and we can go over.
I'm thinking we can do it the first meeting in January. At worst, it would be the second meeting in January, but an idea of cost and where we would do it from and to, and if we'd need to work with DOT, possibly also the city of Palm Bay, and see exactly where we want to try to do that. And I think we can be prepared to share all that information with the board at that time.
That would be great. And I spoke with Commissioner Anderson's wife, Sabrina, and she loves the idea, and she's very supportive of it as well. So, thank you guys for supporting me on that. That's all I have.
All right, that's the end of our meeting. So, we'll go ahead and adjourn it at 7:47. Thank you all so much.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.